The name Kiwanis means we trade, we share our talents. It was coined from a Native American expression, Nuk Kiwanee. Kiwanis are volunteers changing the world through service to children and communities. Kiwanis members help shelter the homeless, feed the hungry, mentor the disadvantaged, care for the sick, they develop youth leaders, build playgrounds, and raise funds for pediatric research and so much more. We've been blessed in Peoria to have one of our neighborhood parks to be named Kiwanis Park. And many years ago, this team, the volunteers at that time and the city staff, launched with a handsome set of amenities. And the park is actually located just tuck south of Sweetwater Avenue at 78th Drive. As you can see, there's an abundance of park users just around the corner and across the street. Arrowhead Kiwanis Club is truly out and about in Peoria. And just the past year alone, our local club has rebuilt and stocked the library at the Peoria Boys and Girls Club, supported Water Safety Day at Sunrise Mountain Pool, and gifted dictionaries to all third graders in the Pendergast and Union School Districts. And on April 11th this past spring, the Kiwanis-sponsored party in the park with barbecue food, inflatables, a petting zoo, DJ'd music, and some good old-fashioned fun for the neighborhood. That party also gave attendees and our Kiwanis partners a chance to design and select the actual playground features that we're talking about for the donation tonight. Working with the manufacturer, Landscape Structures, Inc., and distributor Exterplay, the community has truly picked a great combination. Here you will see a few of the renderings and different perspectives of what our playground will look like. It does appear that our designer has embellished the trees in Arizona just a little bit. And the rendering in the back is not a lake, it's when we occasionally flood irrigate the As you can see, the modern technology incorporated into the playground structures are actually super. And a couple of photos of that old playground structure, as you can see, really was time for some refresh. And as we speak tonight, the crews have already been out and started to disassemble that existing old playground equipment. And we're actually giving our community an opportunity to flex their muscles, come together, and actually put together the new play equipment. Our community build will be held on Saturday, October 24th, 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Kiwanis Park. We hope that all will come out and help us build some smiles. And with that, I'd like to welcome Arrowhead Kiwanis Club members Rita Borden and incoming President Chip Kessler to the podium. And they have a couple of presentations to make to our community and to City Council. Rita, Chip.
Thank you. I want to thank John Sefton, Kirk Haynes, and now Harry Armstrong for helping make this vision a reality. They've been excellent partners with us and they've done a great job. John had asked me some of the things that Kiwanis Club does in the community, and I realized, I told him how we raise money, but I don't think I told him enough of what we did. But we do. We give dictionaries to the Pendergast and Union School Districts, we read at the Youngtown Library, we have parent engagement night at Alta Loma Elementary, we give citizenship awards to the eighth graders in all the Peoria Union District Schools, we have a kids' day at the fair for 4,000 special needs kids, and we support Christmas for Peoria Social Services families. We do homework and help every week at the Peoria Boys and Girls Club, plus all these other things. But this year, we became a model club. Well, model club means that through the contributions of the members of our club, we saved over 15,000 babies around the world from neonatal tetanus. That was pretty exciting for us because it's the upper echelon of Kiwanis Clubs that reaches that. But the happiest thing we've done this year is to give this check to the city of Peoria and make this playground a reality. So with that, Chip, we'd like to give you a check for $20,000 to help with the park. Kathy, we have a little check too.
I want the big check.
Here, we'll give you the big check.
You want to say some more, expert?
I do. Now, there is nothing more fun than getting the big check. I just really, on behalf of the city, on behalf of the city of Peoria, I just really want to thank you both for all that you do, not only for the check, for this playground, for this park, for what you're doing for Peoria, but for what you are doing for the kids and for everybody else that you have helped. I mean, it is incredible, and we are just really honored to have you in our community. Thank you so much for everything.
Boy, your staff.
The next item is the consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda includes liquor licenses or other types of items that require public hearing. If there is any member of the public present who wants to address a public hearing on the consent agenda, please complete a speaker request form and place it in the bin next to the speaker's podium. This item will be removed from the consent agenda and heard during the normal course of the regular agenda. Is there a member of the public who would like to address a public hearing on the consent agenda? All right, seeing none. Council, are there any items to be removed from consent? Seeing none, is there a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, would you please vote, council? Consent agenda passes unanimously. Thank you. We will now move on to new business, item 21R, Water Infrastructure Finance Authority Loan. Mr. Swenson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Carlet. This, of course, is another step in the city's acquisition process for the New River Water District. It's a complicated acquisition that the council has directed, one that will absolutely benefit the Peoria residents and businesses that are within the boundaries of the district. And the item before you tonight is the financing piece of that. And I'll turn it over to Katie Gregory of our Finance and Budget Department. Katie?
Thank you. Thank you, mayor and council. Tonight, the item on your agenda is the approval of a resolution that will give the city the authorization to enter into an loan agreement with the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority for the acquisition of the New River Water Utility, as well as some system, initial system improvements. WIFA, as many of you may already know, is an independent agency of the state that's authorized to finance the acquisition, construction, and improvement of various water, wastewater, and other water quality projects. Generally, we use WIFA because they offer borrowers below-market interest rates on loans, as they have the ability to subsidize the interest rate based on certain criteria such as project need and other environmental benefits. So the city has benefited multiple times from our partnership with WIFA on a number of utility projects, which would include things like the Beardsley Water Reclamation Facility, the Butler Wastewater Treatment Facility, and other water line and wastewater line improvements that we've done throughout the years. In addition to authorizing the loan, the resolution does give staff the ability to take all the necessary action to complete the loan transaction and to immediately enact the provisions of the resolution. The terms of the loan include the following. The city will finance $14 million through WIFA to fund the acquisition and the initial improvements of the New River Utility System. The initial improvements include construction of additional interconnections between the two systems, the city systems and New River system, to provide redundancy and to alleviate some of the existing issues related to water pressure, replacement of water meters with city-compatible meters, acquisition of additional surface water rights, and near-term and future improvements to system infrastructure as deemed necessary through the utility's assessment of some of the assets. Excuse me. It is a 20-year repayment, and we do expect that the payments will be funded through revenues generated from the New River customer rates that council adopted two meetings ago, I believe. Once the purchase agreement is approved, and that's scheduled to be brought forward to council on October 20th, and the loan docs have been executed, the city will be able to close on the loan and begin the transition to take over the operations of the utility and begin billing customers, switching out the water meters, and making all the necessary capital improvements. We anticipate that could occur as early as the end of October, but more likely early So this evening, we would ask that council approves the Resolution 15103, which would authorize us to enter into the loan agreement and give staff the authorization to move forward with that, and then also approve a budget amendment in the amount of $10 million to provide the budget authorization we need for the actual purchase acquisition or purchase agreement that's going to be brought forward to you in the next meeting. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Council, any questions? I would just like to make a comment. I know that going through WIFA is a really great deal for infrastructure for municipalities, and it looks to me like the original interest rate might be 4.25%, but we, because of our great bond rating, our great credit rating, will be even lower getting a 2.5% interest rate. Is that correct?
Right. So the way it works is that they look at, two days prior to closing, they will look at the AAA MMD rate, and then we will get, we actually have an 85% subsidy, so they'll multiply whatever the rate is by 85%, and that will be the rate. We're anticipating it to be right around 2.5%, which is a really good rate currently.
It is a really, really good rate. It is tremendous, and I want, I want all of our citizens who are watching from home to understand that this is the hard work of our finance department, who make sure that we get the best credit rating that we can get, watches our finances, every penny of them, every penny of your tax dollars, so that we can get such a low interest rate, 2.5%. It's almost free money, almost free money. It's really tremendous. So thank you, thank you for your efforts. I appreciate that. So is there a motion?
A motion. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Council, please vote. It is approved unanimously. Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is Call to the Public on Non-Agenda Items. If you wish to address the city council, please complete a speaker request form and place it in the bin next to the speaker's podium. Because of the requirements of the state open meeting law, city council is not authorized to discuss or take action on any issue raised during this comment section. And I do have one speaker request form from Mr. James Dibler. Sir, if you would please come up to the podium and state your name and your city.
Hello, I am James Dibler. I came from Phoenix, Arizona. I am going to school at Arizona State University West. I would like to see that the city of Peoria put a 35-years transit tax for citizens to pay for light rail and bus routes expansion, such as 50-minute bus services on weekdays rush hour, and Sunday bus service on all Peoria routes. The new transit tax would pay to extend to north and south routes on 75th Avenue and 83rd Avenue from Calmbach Road to Arrowhead Town Center. The city of Glendale needs to pay four miles of bus routes expansion to make it happen for the citizens of Glendale and Peoria. I would like to see the city of Glendale and Peoria to merge with Valley Mitchell Northwest Dora Ride to provide better service for people with disabilities without a transfer to Peoria or Glendale Dora Ride. I send adonnances to the victims who died in the mass shooting at the Community College in Oregon. It was a sad tragedy that all the 10 of them died from the shooting. Thanks for no time.
Thank you, Mr. Dibler. Appreciate your comments. Okay, we will now move on to reports from city manager. Mr. Swenson?
Thank you, Mayor Carlet. I do have several brief presentations this morning, or this morning, where'd that come from? This evening. And John Sefton will begin the presentations. John, I'm sure you can do better than me.
This morning, thank you, Mr. Swenson. Yes, my commercial for this evening is the Keep It Safe Family Affair, to be held Saturday, October 10th, 8:00 to 11:00 a.m. with Dignity Health Medical Group. That's up at 7727 West Deer Valley Road here in Peoria, North Peoria. This has been one of those events that we've been working for the past several years to bring to the northern residents, something fun, something exciting, just like the Parkfest that was held last week. We're now branching out and bringing our wonderful special event facilities and experiences to the northern Peoria group. Our bike rodeo, fire and water safety prevention, blood pressure checks, face painting, lots of food, and vendor booths, helmet fitting and giveaways. This is one of the most important things that we're doing at both Parkfest and the Keep It Safe Family Affair, offering riders of all ages helmets for when they ride bikes. There's nothing more scary for a Parks and Rec guy and our public safety folks than seeing kids or adults riding around without a helmet as they are out recreating. So very important that we reach out and make those available to our public. So again, that's Saturday, October 10th, 8:00 to 11:00 a.m. at 7727 West Deer Valley Road in Peoria. Thank you.
Thanks, John. The next two items will be presented by Scott Wyatt, our Economic Development Services Director. And while Scott's coming down, just a little context for this. In the past budget process, the council supported economic development with a number of budget additions. Two of those were in the area of consulting services dollars rather than hiring additional staff. There are some areas where, in our collective judgment as we put the budget together, it was a better way to address the service needs to go out and use contract labor as opposed to staff. So what Scott's about to do now is kind of present how we're approaching meeting that service to the revenue. Scott?
Great, thank you for that, and thank you, mayor and council. The item first up here is an update on our real estate development consulting services. This is associated with a new economic development initiative that responds to one of the elements that was discussed at the city council's most recent goal-setting session, where it recognized the need for a more aggressive approach to real estate development, so that we have the commercial and industrial products to be competitive for the types of industries we seek to attract. So as Carl mentioned, in the budget process, funding was set aside for that. Over the summer, we conducted an RFP, and we've selected and entered a contract with a team that brings a full complement of disciplines for that effort, including architectural engineering, CBRE on the market evaluation brokerage, tenant representative, as well as Hines, who is a commercial developer themselves for pro forma review, and any and all types of technical studies needed, so that we can take our key real estate development sites and not only achieve shovel-ready status for those that are not, but actually investment-ready status, which is a far more detailed evaluation of our sites, so that we can be even more competitive for commercial real estate development and industrial real estate development. So we're really excited about these consultant services being available to us. It adds a great deal of capacity on an as-needed basis, and so we will be starting that process in earnest, so that we can be as competitive for these opportunities as possible. And with that, I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you might have about this item.
Counsel? That's great news. Thank you for the progress.
You're welcome. The second item is an update. As you may recall, before the summer break, I reported that one of the initiatives that we want to move forward with is working with the auto dealers and our auto district in terms of starting a design concept process, so that we can do for the auto district in a unique way and relevant to the auto district what the Economic Development Department started several years ago for the, what is now referred to as P-83 district. And that is a series of streetscape improvements, placemaking, signage, and other improvements for our auto district, including identity creation, so that we can create that as a unique district of the city. And so we, over the summer, working with a working group of auto dealers and key city staff, issued an RFP, evaluated RFPs, and have entered into contract with a consulting firm to work with us, first meeting's Thursday morning, to start that process of coming up with design concepts for streetscape improvements, placemaking, landscaping, as well as signage, and that whole host of activities, including identity creation. So that process will again start in earnest as a new initiative for the Economic Development Services Department, and we'll be bringing those constructs back to council and study session, I would imagine, as they become available. But the chief interface will be working with our working group that includes the auto dealers and coming up with those draft designs for public and council consideration. So we'll be starting that real soon as well.
Good. Thank you, I appreciate that. And for anyone who's not aware, that industry is a critical component of the city of Peoria's revenue sources, very, very critical component. So it's good that we do everything that we can to maintain competitiveness and that we keep them here in our city. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Scott. The next item is a report from Julie Ayers on the progress of the census that's now underway. Of course, the council is well aware, we're in the midst of, I guess, the early part still, but approaching the middle of the census process. Julie?
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. Yes, the city of Peoria, along with six other valley cities, have embarked on this partnership with the U.S. Census Bureau. Last Thursday, October 1st, was the official census day, and I'm happy to report that the census enumerators have finished their training, and they actually have begun going door-to-door. In fact, I had one of my staff members in human resources go home for lunch, and they had this little flyer left on their door, basically saying the numerator had been there and asking them to be contacted to be counted. So we are in the middle of a strong community outreach process. As you are aware, the city is conducting the special census, because our population has had tremendous growth since the last official count in 2010. Our population in 2010 was about 154,000. We believe our population with this new count will be closer to 163,000. Every resident in Peoria counted is worth $318 to our general fund, which provides our essential services, such as public safety, parks, and roads. And the state shared sales tax revenues that we're discussing makes up 31% of the city's general fund. So this is certainly an important project, and we're asking that all of our residents open their door and be counted. We do have a brief commercial we'd like to share with council and our watching public. The city of Peoria will be conducting a special mid-decade census beginning October 1st. Census data is used to distribute millions of federal and state dollars in order to provide important services at the local level. Since the last census held in 2010, Peoria's population has grown immensely. New homes, businesses, and industries have moved into our community, and it's vital that we document this growth with a certified census count, so Peoria receives its fair share of state and federal funds, funds which are then allocated for things like public safety, roads, and other city services we provide. The special census is anticipated to run from October 1st to the end of November 2015. You can help make a difference in our community by simply answering your door and taking the census survey. Special census counts are only taken in person at their residence. It's crucial for everyone to be counted. In fact, each person counted in Peoria equals $318 in annual revenue. Basic demographic information will be collected. Questions about race, gender, and the relationship to the household should be expected. The numerator or census taker will ask you only seven questions. The interview will take less than 10 minutes of your time. The answers you provide are private and confidential under federal law. Every Census Bureau worker takes an oath to protect your privacy. Enumerators or census takers will be working daytime, evenings, weekday, and weekend hours. If you're not home during any of those times and the enumerators have visited your residence multiple times, information on your household will be inputted from neighborhood interviews and household type. That's all it takes to help Peoria. Open your door to new opportunities. Be counted. So, like I said, we're in the middle of our strong community outreach campaign. I was with the chamber breakfast this morning, and we're going to be on the radio tomorrow. Flyers are being distributed to all of our Peoria Unified School District students, and postcards are being mailed to all of our residents. So thank you for the opportunity to continue to share our message, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Counsel? That's a really great advertisement. I love the commercial. Where is that being broadcast?
That is being broadcast on Channel 11, and it's also on YouTube, and many of us have also on LinkedIn and other social media been sharing that message.
Great, thank you.
The next item is shifting gears a little bit on our employees and employee wellness. One of the things that we focus on is a variety of different ways to help our employees stay healthy. And so Julie will take off her census hat and put on her human resources director hat and make this presentation as well.
Thank you. Yes, the city of Peoria, we have a great active wellness committee. They take a lot of pride in helping bring programming to all of our employees. And we have a special campaign that is starting October 13th, and will run through the end of November, and it's the Man Up Campaign. And so in the city, we have a lot of programs. We have the MOM Mobile that comes and a lot of the breast cancer and other awareness programs, but we really thought it was time to have some focus on our male employees and also for our female employees, the males in their life. And so we do have this Man Up Campaign, and it's going to focus on educating employees on men's health, including detection and prevention. It's going to have guest speakers, onsite prostate screening, stretching tips, and challenges for women also. And of course, we'll have some prize drawings for employee participation. We're very excited about a partnership with our AFSMI labor group on this effort and really spending a lot of time, especially out at the MOC and some of those operations that perhaps don't see as much attention from the wellness committee throughout the year. Some of the other events that we have upcoming is a Maintain/Don't Gain Holiday Weight Challenge. There'll be a great American Smokeout, Your Quit Day. And the way that the city is handling this event is to pledge to quit for one day, and if only for one day. And if smoking is not the habit that you wish to break, you can choose another habit and just for that one day, make a commitment to start a new initiative in your life. And then finally, we also have flu and pneumonia vaccinations. We do, we did have flu shots today at City Hall, and we had 109 people attend to receive their flu shot. There will be another opportunity next week here also on city campus. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
I got my shot today. They don't hurt, folks. Our last presentation is about one of our important annual events where we have our public safety folks available for citizens to come and talk with our employees and see our equipment, and Chief Minter will talk about this issue. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Swenson. Good evening, mayor and council. On October 17th, at Rio Vista Park, from 5:30 to 8:30, we will be having our annual GAIN event. GAIN stands for Getting Arizona. GAIN stands for Getting Arizona Involved in Neighborhoods. It's an annual event we've been doing since 1997 that draws about 2,000 visitors annually to the GAIN event. Just to give you an idea of some of the vendors that we've got lined up for this year's event, we've got All in the Game, Chick-fil-A, Maricopa County Attorney General's Office, Target, of course, City of Peoria Neighborhood Services, and then from the Police Department, our Victim Services Unit, our volunteers, Neighborhood Services Unit, Code Enforcement, Animal Services will be there. We'll have a SWAT and traffic officers will have a display there, and then, of course, our patrol officers. So, we're really looking forward to this event again this year. We invite the public and you to come out for that night, full of food and fun, and we look forward to everybody coming out and celebrating this annual event with us.
Counsel, any questions? I have a question. Are you going to have the bomb robot there?
The which robot? I'm sorry.
The robot there that you send in in case you think there is a bomb or...
Oh, yes, from the SWAT team?
Yes.
Yes, we'll have the robot there.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. The robot is a great draw. You've got to see the robot if you haven't been to this event before.
There's always a long line to get to the robot.
Always a long line to see the robot.
Yeah, the robot's one of our biggest draws.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Let's start with Youth Counsel Liaison Boden.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to thank the Kiwanis Club. It was really exciting to see the work on the playground for the youth in that district. I'm almost 17, and it looked super fun, so I'm sure the kids there will definitely enjoy that. And I also appreciate the education, further education on the mid-decade census, and I'll be sure to encourage friends at school and in my neighborhood to open their doors and be counted. So, thank you.
Thank you for that. Counsel Member Binsbacher?
Thank you, Mayor. Gosh, lots of great programs going on and events right now, this time of year. I just want to talk about Peoria Firefighters Charities had their, along with Reba's Vision, hosted their breast cancer, their annual breast cancer awareness luncheon last week, and some of us attended that. And it was just very heartwarming to see the firefighters charities and Reba's Vision and Karabas was there and staff from the committee. They all gathered to bring employees and everyone together to support breast cancer awareness, and it was a big success. They raised some money. They had a raffle. It was just a great experience, and they got a lot of support. So, tonight, counsel is showing their support for the cause by all wearing our shirts. You might notice that we're wearing our firefighters charities shirts in support of cancer awareness. So, and again, just one of many events that have taken place recently and are going to continue to take place during the fall months in support of this and other great causes. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Member Patanna?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of weeks ago, I was able to receive a very prestigious Crescortio Award from the Valley Forward's 35th Annual Environmental Excellence Awards. We received it for our programs in sustainability. This program is under the direction of Lisa Estrada with assistance from Community Services, Communications, and the City Managers Department. I also attended the first-ever meeting of the West Valley Elected Officials in the City's Surprise. There were about seven cities that were represented there, and it gave us an opportunity to talk to other elected officials, see what they're doing in their city. And the one thing that I was really very proud of was that a lot of the elected officials mentioned that Peoria was doing some really great things, and we were recognized for kind of being a leader in the West Valley, and it felt good to hear that from our counterparts. City of Peoria will be hosting the next meeting sometime in January. I also attended the Oktoberfest and the Parkfest, both great events. Oktoberfest was just packed with people. Attended the Parkfest, it was in Vice Mayor's district. He had some great events. There was free hot dogs, sodas, snow cones for the kids, bouncy houses, a movie and a bike giveaway. I said this before, but I'm really a big fan of Parkfest, and it gives the neighborhoods the ability to come together, and it's a great evening out, and if you're a little short on money, everything was free. So, it's, you can't ask for more than that. Also, a couple of weeks ago, I had, attended a coffee with the mayor at Westbrook Village. There were about 50 people there that attended. It was very well-received, and it's kind of a cool format. People were just sitting around tables, and the mayor got to go to every one of the tables and talk to the citizens and answer questions that they had, and happy to hear that there weren't too many concerns about what's going on in the city, and they liked their councilman. So, I was a little nervous about that. The mayor was out on her own. Also, I noticed today, as I was reading the other day, the consent agenda, we have accepted, we accepted in the consent agenda 53,000, 109,000, 63,000, 107,000, 44,000, and $79,000 and some change in grants, and that's over $400,000. That's pretty amazing. That's money that the city gets to use on various projects that we obviously don't have to pay for. So, whatever staff is doing to get those grants, congratulations to you and keep up the good work. And I'd also like to thank the Kiwanis Club for the $20,000 to enhance that park. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor Edwards.
Thank you, Mayor. On the 23rd, I attended the public meeting in Glendale where they were talking about their scenic corridor, and this was just the first step in a long process to make areas along the 101 freeway, about a half-mile stretch on each side, areas where no billboards will be allowed. And the discussion primarily focused on whether that corridor would stay at Union Hills or extend it down to Bell Road, and the overwhelming response from residents from both Peoria and Glendale, of which there was about 100 residents, was to extend it down to Bell Road. So, in the coming months, it'll go to their P&amp;Z committee for review and then ultimately to their council for adoption. And I just want to let people know that, you know, the fight's not over, but it looks like the residents have spoken, the city elected officials in Glendale are listening to both Peoria and Glendale, that they do want to not have billboards along the 101 freeway. So, just keep the effort up, and I will just keep you posted on that. On the 26th, I attended the open house for the Pinnacle Peak Substation, and it was a great event. A lot of residents came in and got to see a first sneak peek of what the conceptual drawings would look like, and not only with drawings, but they'd actually had a drone go out and do the aerials, and it was phenomenal to watch this drone and then have a 3D picture of what this station would look like. And the residents just seemed very excited for this to happen, so I'm really looking forward to that coming forwards in the next year or so. Last week, on the 29th, I started up my Lunch with a Councilmember again, so the goal is to get to all of the local high schools within the Peoria School District and have lunch with as many students that want to come. We had about nine or 10 residents, students that came this time over at Liberty. We talked about issues anywhere from traffic on Deer Valley Road to amenities up in the north, up near Vestancia, where a lot of the kids live. And so, it's just a great opportunity for them to know that they have a voice within the public system, and we take that information and take it back, we give it back to the Youth Advisory, and then they kind of adopt some ideas and where they want to focus their efforts in working with the community. On the 29th, I hosted a local P-83 business update and just got some of the business owners and the business property owners together, along with Chief Mentor and Commander Steele, and just gave them an update on what's going on in the area, gave them some renderings of Phase 2 that's going to be coming up soon, and we'll be having public meetings on showing the public what our perception of that phase is going to be here, probably in the next month or so. Lastly, I did host the Parkfest this last Saturday at Alta Vista. What a tremendous turnout, thanks to John and his staff. We had about 400 to 450 residents come in. We watched Frozen. We gave 100, or 10 bikes away, some from Walmart and some that were donated by other entities. So, again, just want to thank staff and everybody for coming. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel Member Finn?
I just have a couple of things I wanted to talk about. There are actually upcoming events. At Centennial High School, on October 24th, there is an annual shredathon, and proceeds from that are going to the Tyler Walsh and the Willie Rojo scholarships that are given to seniors at Centennial High School. Every year, I believe they've given 27 scholarships since 2007, so I encourage you all, if you have a lot of old documents that you'd like to securely shred, take them on out there. It's $10 a box, and you're supporting a really good, a really good cause out there. That's being sponsored by the National Honor Society at Centennial High School. And it's important to note that because for National Honor Society, you have to do a lot of community service work. You have to get some documented hours. So, parents watching at home, pay attention to this one, because we do have some events coming up that can also get your kids some of that community service work that they're going to need for that National Honor Society. So, the first one is the Kiwanis Community Build that we already talked about, that is going to be on October 24th. Starts at 7:00 in the morning, help put some of that playground equipment together. And the second one is the Neighborhood Pride at Cobblestone Village, which is behind Safeway, 75th Avenue, Cactus area, from 7:00 until 1:00 in the afternoon. And mark my words, if you have kids that are in National Honor Society, they're going to come to you around April, May, when they have to have their community service work done. So, this is a really good opportunity to get it out of the way early. My kids have done it to me probably five times, so get that out of the way early. That's all I have.
Thank you. All right, Counsel Member Hunt?
Thank you. Well, it has been a busy two weeks. I too attended the Oktoberfest last Saturday, and it was so much fun, and the weather cooperated. Just a great day to be out in our Pioneer Park back here and just enjoy all the festivities. A lot of German music and a lot of German dancing there, and a lot of German food. It was actually wonderful. And Mayor, are you going to, I'll leave it up to you to tell the honor that was bestowed on you at the Oktoberfest, because it was quite special. I'll just wait, I'll let you do that.
Drumroll.
Yeah. Also, as Counsel Member Binsbacher mentioned, just thoroughly enjoyed the firefighters' breast cancer awareness luncheon last week. It was fun. People sat around and talked, lots of drawings. I'm sure they're waiting to call me and tell me what I won. They haven't called yet, but a lot of money was raised, and it was just really good to have fun and have a collegial part to fundraising for such a very, very worthy cause. I've had several residents ask what is going, what is going on in the old Walmart Center across Grand Avenue, and it's almost open. It's called State Trailer Sales, and it is, you cannot buy a motorhome there or a trailer or anything like that, but you can actually build yours from scratch if you want to because they're selling every part that goes in a motorhome or a trailer, something like that. So, if your seat breaks or your rims fall off, I don't even know what all the, you need a new steering wheel or something, they're going to be able to sell it to you. It's a huge operation, and they're just about ready to open. They're going, okay, I know what a steering wheel is. I just don't know if those fall off or not. But if they do, you can buy it there, everything. And it's a huge operation. They're going to be a great partner for revitalizing our downtown and also really, really nice people who run it. The other big thing in, along 83rd Avenue, if you drive north or south on your way to or from the City Hall over here, you've probably seen our Old Town Community Garden. You can actually see green stuff coming out now above the wooden boards, and even those who planted seeds are starting to see some seeds. You're welcome. It's a community garden. It's not finished yet. We still have some more construction-type work. We're going to put a fence around it, but you're certainly welcome to go walk in there. Maybe not the next couple of days with the rain, but it's just coming along beautifully, and we are looking at a November 12th, kind of a garden party celebration. So, that's our target date for having everything finished and up and probably some ready to pick. That's all I have.
Thank you. Counsel Member Leonie?
Yes. We'll make this shot and sweet because I'd like to get home to see NCIS by 8 o'clock. I went to the Peoria Fiesta at Theater Works where Pablo Rodriguez, a comedian, was there, and he did a great job. It was a packed house, and it's just something that I enjoy, watching comedians rather than watching a show. But anyway, he did a great job, and I hope he comes back again. I also went to the Fiesta Peoria in Pioneer Park. The music was loud, and it was just great, a lot of people there. And you've got to give a lot of credit to Peoria, who put this on, which they do every year, and they did a lot of hard work getting this going, but it went off, and it went off great, and they, like I said, they had a full crowd there, and I go to these things every year. God, these events are just great. I also went to October, the Oktoberfest for the German culture, and it was just great. I know we didn't put it on, but they did a great job. There are a lot of good things going on for the kids and the families. I only hope they come back every year, and also if we can get other cultures to come in and do the same thing. I think it's important that we keep these events going, and people come in from all over, especially like in Glendale and Surprise, Amarrage, and it's important that they come to these things and see Peoria. I enjoyed it, and my wife enjoyed it, and like I say, I hope they come back every year. On October 1st, my wife and I attended the Breast Cancer Awareness Wrap-Up Lunch. This event was one of the many fundraisers events for this year. Breast Cancer Awareness Campaign, and in a standard raised roughly about $4,000. So, I just want to say to the people who put this on, the volunteers, they did a great job, and hopefully, we can do it again next year. So, I just want to say God bless each and every one of you, and God bless America. Thank you.
Thank you. Youth Counsel Liaison Camacho?
Thank you, Mayor. I had the opportunity to go to a Peoria Explorers Training a few weeks ago, and it was just, it was great. It's a really wonderful organization that they have. And speaking of Vice Mayor Edwards, the, I'm sorry, the Lunch with the Councilmen, as the Chair of the Advisory Board, that's, it's a really wonderful event. There's a lot of good conversation. A lot of topics are brought up that, you know, tend to be ignored, and there's a lot of really good information coming from those meetings. So, thank you for that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Well, you have gotten a good reference there. Okay. Well, to follow up on what Counsel Member Hunt said, I was able to take part in the Oktoberfest. It was so fun. I got the honors of doing the Tap the Cag Ceremony, which, you know, gave me the first stein of beer, so it was fun all the way around. I really loved it. I hope that we'll do that every year. It is put on by the culture of German, what is it, Germanic culture? Germanic cultures? Okay. So, this is a Bavarian tradition, and, you know, now it's a Peoria tradition. It's really great. And I also want to follow up on what Ms. Ayers was talking about, which is the census. The census is critical for the City of Peoria. If everybody answers their door and answers six short questions, we will get the revenue from the state that is due us, and that revenue, about a third of our total revenue that comes to our city annually, is from the numbers that we get from the census. So, if everybody will step up, answer their door, and be counted, we will be able to build roads, put in pl-... build roads, put in playgrounds, fund public safety. You know, if you want those services, open your door. This is for you, citizens of Peoria, and I know that you are always out there and stepping up when we need you, so you are needed. And with that, we are adjourned.